Here.
LaGranne. Lanier.
Present.
Moody No O'Connor.
Here.
Randalls.
Here.
Ross, present. Slate.
Present.
President Faulk.
Present. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of them.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign? Alright. First of all, celebrations. Scholastic awards.
Terasita? Not sure where.
It's every time.
The tape is probably rolling.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to actually do a very simple thing this evening, and that's to introduce to you Michael Pascoe, who has the opportunity of sharing lots of wonderful information about some of our great students here in GRPS. So, Mr. Pascoe?
Thank you, Terasita. Good evening Superintendent Neal, board members, student representative. Tonight, we were just asked to take a couple of minutes to celebrate the talents and accomplishments of some of our City High Middle School Visual Arts students as it relates to the 2013 Scholastic Art Awards. They've been working closely with Mrs. Anne Kranzlewski, one of our finest. She's our art teacher, 7th through 12th grade. Without further ado, I'd like to welcome her up to say a little more about the Scholastic Art Awards and what this means for our students. Anne?
Well, I'm really great, thanks. You know how it is. I'm up here a few times in the past, but I'm here to say some good news. And the Scholastic Art Awards are a really high honor, and I was really pleased when, let's see, I'm gonna just say here, we had three Gold Key winners. One of our Gold Key winners had two pieces, actually, so there were four pieces. And we had two Silver Key. And then we had... Two, three. Six honorable mentions. And the Gold Key winners get sent on to national competitions. So, we're kind of excited about that, and hopefully we'll hear something about that. But if not, it was quite an honor. There was very few... I don't believe there were any other high schools in Grand Rapids that had any winners, so we were really lucky. But my kids are very talented, and I'm gonna shut up now and let them present their beautiful pieces of work to you. I'm gonna ask those of you who are Gold Key winners to first come up. And Kendra, I'm gonna really apologize for silver, but I can't pronounce your name. Your name is worse than my last. I'll start with Janelle Smith, and she's gonna present her piece of work as well. And maybe you could go shake hands with all these wonderful school board members. Yes, but... Janelle, why don't you show your piece to everybody as well? Alexandra Hardy was a junior. Alex, anyway. Alex Hardy. Had two pieces. One was a Gold Key, and then she also has an honorable mention, but I'm gonna let her show them both right now. So, get up there with both of them. You can explain which is which. You choose whatever you wanna do, darling. That's okay.
Nice.
Tasha Kipers is one of our last Gold Keyers. She has two pieces. She also has a Silver Key. Hand an honorable mention. So, I'm gonna let her show all four pieces. Get up there, Tasha. You love that. It is scary. I know, that's why I'm sitting, honey.
This is one that I did...
Ooh, nice.
Ninth grade?
Might have been ninth grade.
Yeah, okay, so this is a ninth grade piece that we got to do for that self-portrait. I took a picture and painted it.
She didn't want me to put that into the competition. She thought it was awful. She got a Silver Key, so...
This is... This is my honorable mention that I got in the Scholastic. I take dance. I've taken dance since I was, like, four or three years old. But for the last couple of years, I've been in a competitive dancing team group. And so, at one of the dance competitions, I observed the dancers and how they dressed themselves. I did a dress-up sketch, and then based it on that sketch.
Great. And I have to say, I watched her do this. It took her like 20 minutes. She has just got a gift. She truly does.
That's beautiful.
It is the other Gold Key. It was a pastel that I wanted to use to represent anorexia. And I wanted to talk, because I wanted to have it.
So Kendra and... Tasha, you're over here. Kendra, I'm gonna... Where are you?
Hello.
Just, I'm gonna let you explain that when it's a similar process to what Janelle did and how you set that up, and then we'll... And the other honorable mentions that haven't gone up there to talk are Lauren Whitfield, who's a senior. Erin O'Driscoll, a senior. Go on, get up there. Tasha Yborben up there. And Sydney Hardy, who is Alex's twin sister. And Daniel Lopez, who is a junior. And you all go up there with your pieces. You don't have to talk. You can just go up there and show them.
Nice. Good job, you guys. Wow. Amazing.
What is that?
Disclaimer.
What night is that?
Toni's daughter's, isn't it?
On Thursday at 7:00, and then Friday at 7:00.
Thank you.
Saturday at 7:00.
Superintendent Neal, board members, student representatives, we appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work. It's also my pleasure to introduce to you Nick Jaskiu, who's the principal at KEC Mayfield, where we also have a budding artist. So, please, Nick, come on down.
I brought my back up here. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Superintendent Neal, distinguished board members. I have the easy task here. I'm gonna introduce my fantastic art teacher, who's done a lot of terrific work. And we've got terrific students like this young man here at KC Oakland in Mayfield. My art teacher is Karen Height, and she's gonna explain his piece.
We've met before. Thank you for having me again. And we also, I also put in student work for the Scholastic Art Show. And this is Cory Johnson. And Cory's a 7th grader at KEC Mayfield Middle School. And he won an honorable mention.
Alright, Casey.
So, we were studying molas, which are Hispanic pieces of very colorful artwork. And Cory took a fish and decorated, designed it with, using yarn and very bright colors. And we're sorry we don't have it with us tonight, but it's really, really beautiful. And he did a great job. He worked really hard on it. And fabric. Very neat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very nice for sharing those. Now, we have our student representatives here tonight. It's your turn. What do we...
How's everyone tonight? Let's have a brief thank you I wanna give out to the District of Greenwich Public Schools for the extra work they was putting to our materials and knowledge for us to get ready for MMEs week. Thank you.
Nothing, alright. Public comment for agenda items only.
Quite a stack here. We'll start with Ms. Mary Bowens, Mr. Paul Helder, Ms. Alyssa Hughes, and Ms. Shan Rines. If you guys, oh, there's no room at you at the front, so I guess we just need to do a couple at a time. Mary and Paul, then. Before you start, would you like a one-minute reminder, or are you okay with just a... Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, President, Ms. Neal, and school board members. I'm Mary Bowens, the Vice President of GREA. For the last seven years, I have been the homebound teacher. I spend my days in schools and homes around the district. This gives me a unique opportunity to speak with a variety of staff and parents on a daily basis. I commend the concept of Ms. Neal in her email asking that we support and promote the district to the community. It is an effective method to make sure that everyone is working together to improve the health of Grand Rapids Public Schools. The concern I bring to you tonight is the mixed message the staff is receiving. On one hand, we're asked to support, promote, and sell the district, and of course, indirectly our own livelihood. But the reality is that it becomes increasingly difficult. The distractions we have in doing our jobs have increased dramatically. Just as students have difficulty learning when there are distractions of hunger, violence, and uncertainty in their lives, we also experience the same anxieties. For instance, we are distracted by our own personal financial obligations and the reduced income to cover these expenses. We're distracted by the unknown future of the 10 school closings for staff and students. We're distracted by the lack of curriculum, textbooks, and toilet paper. We're distracted by inexperienced administrators. And of course, we're distracted with the lack of a contract. The survival of GRPS is dependent on mutual support from all the parties involved. GREA staff do not feel supported. People cannot be a sales rep when the morale is so low, and the distractions keep us from being the ambassadors you would like us all to be. Please offer us the support that we, that you expect from us.
Mr. Helder, this will be an agenda item, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, I would like the one minute, 'cause I tend to go on.
Sir.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Couple different agenda items. I'm gonna kinda move them fairly quickly. Before I do, though, I wanna address the issue of the overall financial picture of the district. The last meeting, there was a couple of criticism, lobbed about a very basic piece of information that I gave regarding what we call instructional effort, which is the percentage of total revenue placed into instruction. I understand there are some issues around that, some challenges. That's fine. I only mention it, you know, again, related to the financial report, because I put in a para request over a week ago. There was a little hiccup, some miscommunication, I guess. I received notification back that they didn't have to fill that para request because the district had never said that they couldn't afford any of our proposals. Turns out, maybe that's not what was meant. So, I bring it to your attention because with the limited timeframe we have left to conclude our negotiations, I really need that original para filled. I need that financial information so that I can respond to what's been going on with some of the money, and maybe we can find a solution to what's happening. So, I'm not gonna go into all the expenditures you've got on the thing today, but it is worth taking a look at. Beyond that, I guess I would point out, you're honoring today Women's History Month. And as a history teacher, I think that's fantastic. For well over 100 years, in fact, 1844 is the first time I could find record of it, women have been organizing themselves into labor unions to push for equal pay. When you look at the struggle for women's rights, it is, in fact, as you go through, almost universally, a struggle pushed for and supported by unions. Without the work of unions, and I know that there are some on the board that don't care for unions, but without that work, I doubt very much that we would have a female board president, an African-American female superintendent, and another African-American female running for city council. Throughout Michigan, women right now are paid approximately 74 cents on the dollar compared to a man of equal ability doing the same job throughout Michigan. With one notable exception, if those women are in a union. In a union, men and women, black, white, Hispanic, everyone is treated equally. We believe in that. We would like to believe that you believe in that. And in fact, I know the vast majority, if not all of you, do. We also know there are some who do not. I know that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the quote-unquote "war on women." Well, there's a war on teachers as well. And teachers are predominantly a female profession. And those things are related. And so, I ask that you consider that as we move forward, because there is an overwhelming feeling that some of the forces at work aren't so much targeting teachers as they are women. Thank you.
Alyssa Hughes. Alyssa Hughes, Shan Rines, and Lenora Navara. Alyssa Hughes, Shan Rines, Lenora Navara. If any one of you would like the one-minute reminder, just please let me know. Step to the mic. You would?
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you please give us your name?
Alyssa Hughes.
Thank you.
And I, too, would like to speak about women in history. It is noteworthy that we pay homage to women leaders throughout history. How ironic that the last remaining vista of injustice to women here in the United States is the imbalance of fair pay. The right to vote and equal opportunities have been won after long, hard battles. Yet, we consider the long road to overcome injustice for women the disparity. The disparity still exists today of a $77 to $100 difference for men and women for the same job. Economic injustice anywhere is despicable. People minimize the seriousness of shortchanging workers as if the problem is not a formal, is not a form of cruel prejudice, racism, or misogyny. Listen to the biblical interpretation of the seriousness of shortchanging laborers. Now, listen, you rich people. Weep and wail because of the misery that is coming on you. Your wealth has rotted, and moss have eaten your clothes. Your gold and silver are corroded. Look at the wages you failed to pay the workers are crying out against you. The cries of the workers have reached the ears of the Lord. It has never made sense for the religious right to clutch their Bibles that contain these words of warning against wage suppression while they fight tooth and nail against raising the minimum wage. The height of hypocrisy lies in feigned appreciation for laborers while turning a deaf ear to the economic facts and realities that affect them. Unfair payment for professional teachers is no less destructive to the teacher's family unit than in any time in history. Teachers on food stamps should be an oxymoron. It has been quoted by officials in this room that this district is flushed with money. Let's invest in the most valuable asset this district possesses, the teachers of GRPS.
I'm Lenora Navara, and thank you for having me here tonight. Dear Board, esteemed President and Superintendent, this is regarding the current impasse on the contract, but there are a few points that I'd like to make. The Grand Rapids press has substantiated that the district has at least $16 million in cash reserved. It's a fact that the district allocates a mere 39% of its total expenditures on instruction. That means that a full 61% of this district's expenditures are allocated toward administration and other non-instructional areas. Teachers are proposing a 2% annual increase in compensation. This is less than a standard 3% annual cost of living income. This district is proposing what amounts to be a reduction in compensation. My question to you is, why are you not investing in your teachers and the staff for the new Grand Rapids Public Schools that you are trying to promote, and we are, too? I had two job offers before I came to United, came to Grand Rapids Public Schools, and they paid substantially more money. But I chose Grand Rapids Public Schools because I wanted to be in a district where I could have some impact on students who needed me. And I also realized that I needed those students as well. I needed to learn about a diverse population and enjoy their cultures as well. I have a master's degree. I have four No Child Left Behind. I have seven endorsements total. There are many teachers here who have as much education or more than I. I did not have my education reimbursed by Grand Rapids Public Schools with the exception of two credit hours. When I came here, I really believed that I belonged to a good, good system that valued each other. And when I listened to and said our pledge of allegiance, there were two words that really struck me to the core tonight, and it was indivisible injustice. And I think that all of us have invested in GRPS. We've invested our educations. We've invested our souls with our children. They mean so much to us. They're ours. We've invested in our schools, and we've put our trust in you. And I would really like to believe, as the rest of us would like to believe, that you think that we're worth investing in as well. So, please keep us in mind so that we can stay with you, because we're the ones that chose you. And luckily, you said, "Fine, come on." But don't forget, we came to you. And we would like to know that you appreciate us just a little. So, thank you for listening.
Ms. Rines, we have a number of people who have put in for agenda items. And if it's about negotiations or the contract, that's a non-agenda item. So, the reason we have the agenda items at this point is as it relates to anything we may be voting on. So, anything within the consent agenda or an action item. Value your comment, but if it's about the contract or negotiations, it should come at the end of the meeting? Okay? Is this an agenda item? Okay. If you could, well, put your card for the end of the meeting. Wanna read them out?
I don't know if that applies. We have quite a few that list the same thing, personnel transactions. Jane Neiman, Jennifer Lavelle, Dan Duong, Jack Prince, and...
Well, I'm looking through here.
Aaron McDonald.
I have Britten Fowler for finance, Lori Carriage for Women's History, and Melody Faith on the insurance policy holder resolution. Okay. Is it related to what's on the finance specifically? What we're approving?
I do not have specifics of finance. I just know, I just see the agenda here that says, or is it, financials, business items? That's the only thing that I have.
Is it specifically regarding the contract?
Uh, no.
Okay, alright.
And Britten Fowler, 14-year veteran of teacher at Creston High School, and a member of the Instructional Council as well. Again, I was running a little late tonight as I rushed over here from an interview for a second job, which brings me to my question that I, that can either be rhetorical or not. How many of you have had recently had to get a second job to support your families? I'm here again, as I was two weeks ago, to put forth my request for the board to look again at the misinterpretation of the recent aggressive PA law, or law, PA 152, that continues to put a financial burden on not only me and my daughter, but over 50 of my colleagues in their single-parent, one-child households, as well as the continued defiance of GRPS to listen to its own surveys and recent Cambridge report that suggests that the district increase compensation for its employees if it cares to retain and recruit highly qualified professionals. It seems as though GRPS has been more concerned in ignoring nine-tenths of this report and only focus on one part or small parts and abandon a quarter of the city of Grand Rapids in which the school district serves and in the residents in this part of the city for a makeover that makes it look as if we are reinventing GRPS, when all we really are doing is putting a nice new coat of paint and marketing scheme on the same old house. We've been kindly asked by Superintendent Neal and many building administrators to be ambassadors and sales representatives for this new Grand Rapids Public Schools. But most of us are not really sure what we are supposed to represent, as we have yet to see how this transformation plan is truly going to play out with all the uncertainty of staff movements, negotiations, and so on. And in the words of Janet Jackson, "What have you done for us lately?" And this uncertainty, this uncertainty does not only affect the employees of GRPS, but also the students, families, and the communities of this fine city. So, for Grand Rapids Public Schools to continue to act this way as we have come to the board week after week after week, and especially towards its employees and students who have been literally given blood, sweat, and tears... been literally given blood, sweat, and tears back to this district, should continue to be an embarrassment for GRPS. Thank you.
I have two other, I have two other comment cards that have, subject that seems to relate to agenda items. This is Melody Faith. Is she here, this evening? Thank you, Ms. Faith, and also Lori Carriage.
Ms. Faith, would you like the reminder, or you're okay?
I, I don't think I'll be going more than three minutes, but please do remind me if I go too long. My name is Melody Faith. I'm an occupational therapist with Grand Rapids Public Schools. I've been here for thirteen years, and I want to say, to start off with, I love my job. I love my coworkers. I love the kids I work with, and every day I, I am thankful that I get the opportunity to work with kids and make a difference. I used to be able to say I loved Grand Rapids Public Schools, and I'm not feeling the love In the end of January, we had an emergency meeting of the union related to a letter that came out about the insurance issue and about how much more we would have to pay on insurance to make up the difference for that, the cap. I don't know, I don't have all my paperwork with me because I didn't realize tonight was the meeting, and it's at home. I live a long way away, so I'm gonna, I'm winging it a little bit, but the gist of the letter was that if you were a person who had one person on your insurance, as I am with my husband, it would be approximately a hundred extra dollars a month. And the other issue was that they wanted us to approve that, but at the same time, we would give up all of our bargaining rights that were not mandatory. And the union representatives unanimously voted no, because we didn't want to give up every one of our bargaining rights. Shortly thereafter, at the beginning of February, we got a letter from you, ma'am, and in that letter, I found out that I would be paying an extra four hundred dollars a month on my insurance. Because I'm paid through Count ISD, I went back and looked over all of my pay stubs since two thousand and nine. I got my master's degree in two thousand and nine, and at this point, my take-home pay is two percent less than before I got my master's degree. My pay is fifteen percent less than the six-month period where I made the most money. I understand it's a hard time. I understand that the state is imposing a lot of things on educators because, for some reason, we're public enemy number one. What I do not understand is how you could offer us approximately a hundred dollars a month and then turn around two weeks later and take out four hundred dollars a month from my paycheck, because I don't have children. It's not my fault. I could not have children. It is unfair to be penalizing people because they don't have children. It's unfair to not equally divide what is necessary to pay off this money so that we can get the money from the state. And that's basically all I have to say.
Ms. Carriage? Ms. Carriage?
Anna here.
Okay. Okay. Have all the rest of these cards for, at the end of the meeting, that, public comment at that time. Secretary's Report. Mr. Ross. Your name, please. Come on up, Patty. Here we go. All right. Thank you, Ms. Warmenton. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Patty Warmenton from Cherry Street Health Services. We are working under a grant from the Department of Community Health, and they are working from a grant through the Center for Disease Control, and this all is related to tobacco. You have a policy for the first reading in front of you today. I just want to let you know that, I want to thank the Finance Committee for moving that forward to the Board, and that this policy just makes it clear as to what and where and when tobacco is permitted, which basically it's not permitted at all, but it makes it a lot clearer. There are new generations of products coming out that are not based on smoke, but they're based on either containing tobacco or they're just nicotine products. So, this, um, this kind of moves along with the new products that are coming out there. It sends a very strong message to the, to the student body about the, um, the health and welfare, that we care about them, that we want them in a safe environment, and it upgrade, it basically, it's upgrading your tobacco policy to be more state-of-the-art. We at Cherry are going to be putting out a, a thank you to the school districts that have met a certain comprehensive tobacco policy at the end of March. You'll be voting on this before that would go out. I'm really, really hoping that we can have Grand Rapids Public Schools on that list of schools that will be out in the paper. And I'm available at any time for any questions that any Board members may have. I do have, some of the Finance Committee have, they already received some information, but I do have some other information for the rest of you.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies for missing your card for the agenda item. Ms. Wilson, is this specifically?
Specifically?
Yeah.
Yes. It is in your, it is in your consent package.
Okay.
Okay. First, though, because I'm a teacher and I can't help it, Robert, okay, when they show all that art, all you have to say is, "Gosh, I wish we had art at our school." Okay? Um, okay. I'm Louise Wilson. I'm at Central High School, where we don't have an art teacher. This is about the Superintendent's evaluation, which is part of your consent agenda. It's in the consent agenda. Obviously, I don't know what it, what it says about, about the Superintendent evaluation. It's in one of the ad hoc committee things. I was asked to fill out a survey related to the evaluation of the Superintendent. Among the questions was one on how well she had done with relationship to the contracts with various bargaining units. We teachers are given a curriculum by the district into which we have little or no input, or we're given no curriculum at all, and merely a course title with no other information. We're given it at the last minute. We're given inadequate materials. We're not allowed to deviate from prescriptions, which are often changed in the middle of a, of a course. We're then evaluated on how effective this course is in teaching children, as if we were responsible for the creation and utility of the course. We think this is unreasonable of the administration to impose restraints on teachers and then hold teachers accountable for these, for these constraints, which we consider unreasonable as well. Similarly, if the Superintendent is being told by the school board to not negotiate a contract, to not allow step increases for teachers, and to impose the effects of right to work as soon as possible, it seems unreasonable for the school board to then evaluate her based on the restraints they have imposed. I'm deeply disappointed to be told that the school board voted to condemn right to work, but are then encouraging administration to implement it as soon as possible. I'm discouraged when the school board says they're trying to help teachers, but are then instructing the administrators to take thousands of dollars from each teacher and refuse to allow step increases or even cost of living increases, even though the administrators admit they have the money to do so. I'm stunned to find that we've been told at Board meetings that contract negotiations have been occurring throughout the year, when the GRPS negotiating team has only just begun to attend meetings. As Board members, when you evaluate the Superintendent, please hold in your mind that you impose these restraints upon her performance. If you did not tell her to refuse to negotiate, then by all means, hold her accountable. But that is not what I'm being told. Only you, only you know the truth. Please act accordingly. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Uh, just a couple of items for the Secretary's Report. First of all, the State of Schools address is Saturday, March sixteenth, nine AM to ten AM, Ottawa Hills High School, two fifty-five Rosewood. Ms. Neal will be providing information on the new vision direction and future of GRPS. Doors open at eight-thirty with light refreshments provided. If you're interested in attending, please RSVP by calling the Superintendent's office at eight-one-nine-two-one-nine-three, eight-one-nine-two-one-nine-three, or emailing, I won't even try to pronounce this one, but, uh, you know how to get in touch with the Superintendent's office, I would imagine. Uh, also, I'd be remiss not to note that Annie at City High School, this coming Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, seven PM each night and one PM, uh, on Saturday. And that's, uh, seven dollars for the evening shows and five dollars for the matinees, and that'll take place at Creston High School's auditorium.
Rumor has it, Mr. Baker's daughter is in that production.
That's, that's a fact.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you very much. I would ask John Hemholt, Natasha, and is Clarice here? I'm not, Clarice? Good evening. To come forward, please.
I think we're a woman down or a voice down, at least.
A voice down.
With Natasha and her angitis. Madam President, and Superintendent, Board members, we're here tonight with the beginning of a presentation and update on the transformation plan, and we have a bunch of young models who've been extremely patient and understanding, who are ready to go, and so, we're going to start right off with, um, an overview of the, uh, school uniforms. As you know, as part of the transformation plan that was approved by this Board, uh, we are looking to phase in uniforms district-wide, starting with elementary and K-eight schools next year. The following year would be middle schools, and the year after that would be high schools. With me here today is Ms. Clarice Drew, who really needs no introduction, but of local radio, television personality, has her own consulting business, actually did work with the district on professional development and customer service with the Secretaries just a few weeks ago. And, um, to just give a very quick overview, the uniforms, the colors that we're talking about are collared shirts. They'll be navy blue, light blue, white, red, and black, with the bottoms being khaki, black, and navy. We have a new website, that's GRPS.org backslash uniforms on there. Uh, you will see that the, we're listing all of these expectations, as well as preferred vendors. We expect that list will likely grow. We met with almost a dozen different people. Right now, Meyer, uh, obviously Meyer Thrifty Acres, if you're old-school like me, um, and, and Education Outfitters are the two that are on there currently. Their pricing, uh, was price, quality, and accessibility were the three key factors that we looked at. Each school will be presented with essentially a closet of clothes in preparation for the start of school. That's something we learned from the existing schools that have uniforms. We have eight schools. We're the large, region's largest selection of schools that currently require uniforms. We're taking what we're, what we, they've learned, what we've learned over the years, and incorporating it. Those colors are also colors that are representative of each of the schools that have school uniforms. Uh, we had talked about a possible requirement for the pre-K and K students to have red shirts. Uh, we got some pushback and feedback from principals, so that's something that will not be a requirement, but an option for each individual school to choose, as will some of those schools like MLK, where they've already got navy blue and white, I think, are the two colors they, so they can opt to maintain those colors without expanding it into all five colors, and we'll be working with that on implementation. And I know I'm going quick, so I'm going to turn it over to Clarice to start our wonderful young models from mostly campus elementary, I believe.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Uh, we do have some wonderful models, and I just wanted to say, too, that the beauty of uniforms is, um, quite evident. Number one, it saves on, on wardrobes, selections. And we got our first model now. Hi, Amaya. Amaya is a second grader at Coit Elementary. She's wearing a navy blue polo dress from Meyer. Now, I've felt the fabric on these. It's durable. It's the kind of fabric that gives, and when you wash it, mothers and fathers, and put it in the washing machine and dryer, it'll save its shape. Amaya, you want to turn around a little? Kind ladies and gentlemen, see you there. It's beautiful, and she can wear leggings underneath it. It's versatile. She can put some little pants under that if she chooses, and, um, still be free to be a little girl at Coit. Thanks, Amaya.
Get the boots.
Oh, does she have on boots?
Nice.
Yeah. She's got on boots, too.
Thank you, Amaya.
Thank you, Amaya. Our second model, I believe, is Jason. Hi, Jason. Now, Jason, you look so handsome. You want to turn around to the Board members and to Ms. Weatherall Neal, your Superintendent? Now, look at what Jason is wearing. He's got a sweater, and, and I was really impressed with the fabric on that, too. It's not too thick. It breathes well, and again, it's one of those kinds of durable qualities that you can put in the washing machine and dryer. They go to playground, they get dirty, they need to get washed. But the color is soft, and Jason, does that polo shirt feel pretty good around your neck? You like it? All right. Well, thank you, Jason. You look wonderful. All of Jason's, Jason's clothes, the navy vest is from Meyer, and the pants were from Educational Outfitters. I want to get that in. Now, we have Shakaya, Shakaya? Shakaya. I was right the first time. You look lovely, Shakaya. Now, Shakaya's outfit kind of fools the eye because it looks like she's got on a blouse and a sweater, but when you turn around and let the other people in the room see that Shakaya, it's kind of made in one piece. And the nice thing about that is she doesn't have to tug and pull on it all day. It stays together for her and gives her a nice fit and some versatility. And Shakaya was saying in the dressing room, "Mrs. Drew, this is neat, and I don't know if I should wear the beige skirt, this khaki beige, or if I should wear the navy skirt." So, she gets choices with that.
Nice.
And it makes it, uh, real versatile for her. Very nice, Shakaya.
Nice, Shakaya.
Shakaya's, Shakaya's skirt was from Screen Ideas, and her sweater is from Meyer. And now, we have Sanai. Sanai looks precious. Sanai is a, is a preschooler at Dickinson Elementary, and she's the first lady in red, aren't you? You look wonderful. And we rolled those sleeves up a little bit in the dressing room, didn't we? So that it fitted you just the way you wanted it to. It's lovely. You want to turn around and let the ladies and gentlemen at the table see you? Can you just flip around that way?
Over here.
Shakaya, um, commented when we were in the dressing room that her pants felt a little big, and so, the neat thing about that was that they have the elasticized waist with the adjustable button, and then that way, you can make it fit, depending on the child's waist, and, um... The outfit on Sanai is from Meyer with the red polo shirt and the navy pants are from Educational Outfitters. Samara, you going someplace there, Samara? You look lovely. Samara has on a Peter Pan collar shirt or blouse, which is another look, because the polo shirt is just the traditional cut, but on the Peter Pan collar, that's a little softer, and it's kind of poetic-looking. And so, that looks really beautiful on Samara. You want to turn around and let everybody see you on the other side? Now, she's got the same pant on, but she's got it in khaki, uh, the khaki beige. The fabric is actually poplin, and the pant is a khaki beige, and she's at Coit Elementary. You look lovely. Thank you. And Jaden, Jaden, you look like a true gentleman. I like that button-down collar shirt, and I love the cardigan. How does it feel? Pretty cozy? Yeah. Jaden, if you'll turn around and let the Board members see what you're wearing. And again, now, as, as the weather is transitioning from very cold to slightly cool, a sweater like this, again, I tested the fabric, very durable, warm, but not overly warm. It'll be comfortable for him, and he can do a lot of different things with that. He's got the cardigan that buttons down, and then he has other shirts and card, and, excuse me, polos and other colors. So, it looks really good. And Jaden is a fourth grader at campus, and his entire outfit is from Meyer Corporation, but that sweater, I've used that kind of fabric before, washes and dries really well. Looks handsome on you, Jaden. Thank you.
Nice, Jaden.
And our next student is Kalise, who is a sixth grader at Sherwood Elementary. You look lovely. And now, she's doing something that I think is so sweet here. A lot of people say, "Well, uniforms are boring, and we all have to look the same, and where's my individuality?" I think the individuality sticks out here because she has a nice pink pair of pantyhose. You want to turn around and let everybody see as you go up and down with that? And she can do that same outfit with her beige or camel-colored skirt.
Nice.
And still wear the sweater, which has neat little pom-poms on the end of it. So, you can do red socks, pink stockings. You can do a lot of different things with that. Looks great on you. Thank you.
Nice.
And Kalise is at Sherwood Elementary. Now, we have Han- Now we have handsome Tyler. And Tyler, I love that sweater vest. Is it comfortable for you? Now, we just saw a sweater that buttoned up, which was the cardigan effect, but with the sweater vest, you can do the short sleeve shirt, such as what he's wearing, and then you can also do the long sleeve, and you can even put a polo shirt under that if you'd like. You want to turn around and let the board members take a look at that on you? Tyler is a sixth grader at C.A. Frost Elementary, and he's wearing clothes that are designed by Educational Outfitters. And one other thing too on these pants, that is for boys out on the playground, and girls too. It's a very durable fabric, tough and resilient, and the type that washes and you don't have to iron it, you can just take it out of the dryer and keep going in your uniform the next day. Thanks a lot, Tyler. Now, our kids grow up, and when they grow up, we hope they look as lovely as Helen does, who is a senior at Creston High School. Helen is wearing the skirt, and she and I were talking about it a little earlier, and she said, Mrs. Drew, you know, it does have pockets, and we like that. So she's got that pocket on one side, and then it zips on the other side. And I might add that for the younger girls who wear these same skirts, they actually are scorts, and I think most of you know what scorts are because you get the shorts underneath. They get on the gym stuff outside and play, and they need something that's going to be comfortable for that. But on Helen, we've got the nice pleats, which are set in, and Helen, you want to turn around the other way because this blouse is accented with pleats also, and she can let the sleeve up a little bit, or she can let it down, and she looks lovely with the accent in her hair. So there are a lot of different things that you can do to make your outfit have your own signature. The outfit that Helen is wearing is from Educational Outfitters. And again, Helen's a senior at Creston. Thank you.
So that was a sneak preview of what we have in store, starting next school year. Obviously, the webpage will continue to be updated. We'll be putting price listings on there, as well as obviously samples, pictures of the uniforms. Another vendor I failed to mention was Screen Ideas, which did get mentioned there. Not a retail vendor, whereas Educational Outfitters has a, has a spot on the 28th Street, and obviously Meyer has multiple locations. That is one that will have an order form, an online ordering that we would work with. Obviously, we'll be partnering with others as well, and families are not required to use any of the recommended or preferred providers. We really did focus on locally-owned establishments and to make them accessible, affordable, and obviously high-quality. And so you'll hear more on that in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you. Thank you, Clarice.
You're welcome. Any questions, comments from the board members? Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to ask Susan Heinig to join me up here. This is an opportunity, I know we've, we've had lots of meetings in the last week with the intent of sharing with as many staff as possible, principals, counselors, youth advocates. We meet with secretaries tomorrow, and the idea is, is to really share the new attendance area boundaries, share the frequently asked questions, which will be, right now is a two-page document that'll eventually probably turn into a multi-page, 10, 20-page document. We are here, we're going to walk you through the maps, and we're going to do this rather quickly. These maps will be available on our website at GRPS.org backslash Transformation Plan in the coming days. There's a few things we've got to do to upload. So... While we're waiting for that to pop up, I will, I will point to some of the frequently asked questions, and also look to Sam Mickens in case that we may need a little bit of assistance up here. The frequently asked questions are actually going to be embedded in the more than 100 different versions of letters that are being finalized as we speak. Those letters will be translating this week, and our goal is to have them in the mail by the end of this week. You can imagine we have students that are there in neighborhood schools, students who are there in theme or centers of innovation, or maybe they're on transfer, or center-based students, or students that have English language learner needs. We have different letters for every single student, so this is a highly complex process, but it's one where the frequently asked questions that we have on the site will be a master document that has somewhat broad, generic answers to a lot of questions. Those who need further details should refer to those letters. Those letters will be sent in advance to all the schools, so the schools will be able to post them on the individual school websites, and obviously they'll be accessible through the communications department. Susan, you want to start it off?
Good evening. We're going to start with the elementary boundaries and work our way up to the high schools. The parameters that we use for drawing boundaries are we try not to be aware of major streets, and we try to be aware of maintaining the contiguous attendance areas and a K-12 feeder pattern. Okay? We're going to start at the north end of the city, and we... Sorry. Now we broke. Okay. We're going to start at the north end of the city, and we're going to start here with North Park Montessori. This is the North Park area, this is a 96 up here in Plainfield to the side. This is a new area for North Park attendance areas. The elementary attendance areas are all K, K-5 attendance areas. And down here, we have the new Aberdeen attendance area where we have this portion of the North Park area that's been added to Aberdeen. Aberdeen is a K-8. Next year with North Park feeding into that as part of the K-8. Okay? There was no change to Palmer, there is no change to Cantils, there is no change to East Leonard or Coit, there's no boundary change for GR Montessori area boundary or Congress. MLK, there is, there is an addition. Coit, there's a closure at Campaw, Campaw's here. We took a piece of the Coit area and added it to Southwest. We took a small area that was here from Campaw, added it to Chavez. We added this piece to MLK, and then the remainder of, of Campaw, which is this area here, has been added to campus with a small piece added for the Ford. All of our theme schools, with the exception of the Citywide, City, Landford Zoo, Economicology, and Grupa, have small attendance areas where K-5 students can walk in and enroll. Okay, we're going to move down here, going to the south, this gets a little complicated. This is the Mulick attendance area here. As you know, Shawnee closed, Shawnee was located here, and because of the addition into campus, we took a piece of the campus area and moved it to, to Mulick. This area here continues to be part of Mulick, but we did add this piece of Shawnee. This piece of Mulick and Shawnee and Ken O'Shea are now all Sherwoods. The Sherwood is now this area. Ken O'Shea will be, will be accepting the Grand Rapids Oral Death Program, plus the GSRP programs, plus early childhood special ed programs. But we are maintaining a small neighborhood so that we have general ed students K-5 for mainstreaming capabilities. Brookside, there is no change. Dickinson, there's no attendance area change, but it is moving to be a K-8 building next year. Burton, Buchanan, and are no change, and I already mentioned the change at Chavez and Southwest. So we're going to cross the river now, and we have this area, Shawmet. This is the current area of Shawmet, and you may remember, as part of the Transformation Plan, we talked about with the Clovel of Closure, the Closure of Clovel, we were looking to move that into Shawmet, Harrison, and the new stocking. Well, this is a very densely populated area right here, and a number of the attempts at a feeder pattern, uh, attendance area didn't work, so, and, and we are leaving Shawmet as is and moving all of Clovel into Harrison. Stocking will be created, smaller attendance areas here, but it's a fairly densely populated area with, by taking the bottom, the top part here, which was formerly at Harrison, and the bottom part here, which is formerly at Shawmet. So that, those are all of the changes.
Sibley.
Oh, Sibley, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Okay, that's it. Now we're going to move to the middle school, and I'm assuming that we'll ask questions at the end. Okay? Middle school, we are moving to four middle schools next year, so here's the middle school map. Changes here are the Grand Rapids-Montessori area, and the Congress area will now feed to Alger as part of that change there, and Southwest will feed to Burton Middle. Students who are currently at Riverside from Grand Rapids-Montessori area and the Congress area in grade six through seventh may be, will be given the option to remain at Riverside. Same with the students from the Southwest area currently in grade six and seven who are at Westwood will be given the option to remain at Westwood. Ford, as you know, is closed as a middle school next year and will be a K-8 feeder pattern. Okay? I'm going to go to the high school, and these are the high school boundaries. There will be, oh, the color didn't come. Well, on my map, this area here is green, so I don't know what's going on here, but this area here from Congress, GR Montessori, Congress, MLK, Ford, everything here should be showing up as green, is all the new Ottawa boundary, and this area here going north from here over to here is all Union boundary here for the two attendance areas. As you know, the Center of Innovation High School, which is not the official name, will be at Central, and City will be moving into the Creston Building. And then Grupa will be opening next year on its new location and division. Montessori High School will continue to be at the Central Campus. That's my show.
Those are the attendance area boundaries. We'll, we'll open it up for questions. You know, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the FAQ. I mean, the questions they talk about, what will my, what, what school my child attend? Will my child receive transportation? What athletic team will they be on? A lot of standard questions that'll be on there. We're certainly happy to answer questions, but in the sake of time, we'll, we'll open it up.
I think it would help, be helpful, John, if you just gave a quick description of what you're doing for outreach, for awareness about these changes to the families.
Sure. Well, first and foremost, I mentioned the letters already. English and Spanish, those letters will be mailed directly to every single family in the entire district. It's going to get a letter, even if there is little to no change in their school for next school year. And I want to emphasize, all of these changes are, again, for next school year, 2013, 2014. In addition to that, obviously, we have dedicated webpages for both the Transformation Plan, so these maps will be on the GRPS.org backslash Transformation Plan, along with obviously the version 3.0 plan, the frequently asked questions, and we're going to keep building on that site as necessary. The, we have a number of community meetings that are scheduled. We talked about this at the last board meeting, but I'll go through them. March 19th, April 22nd, and May 21st from 6:00 to 7:30 at Union High School. March 20th, April 23rd, and May 22nd from 6:00 to 7:30 at Creston High School. March 25th, April 25th, and May 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 at Ottawa Hills High School. These are listed not only on the frequently asked questions, but we'll have them on the website. These are kind of a mixture of the kind of listening tour forums, will be a chance to ask, ask questions, get more information, but also like a school choice open house, very similar to what we do in November and January for theme schools and centers of innovation, but expanded and done on a regional basis. In addition to that, you obviously have probably already started seeing some billboards, bus ads, radio ads, social media, newspaper ads, and all the different newspaper outlets you can think of. We've, we've done also a grassroots initiative in partnership with Link Community Revitalization and the Believe to Become Initiative, Seeds of Promise, and Steeple Town Ministries, which is over on the northwest side. They are assisting in monthly door-to-door campaigns, knocking every single door in their targeted neighborhoods, meeting barber shops, beauty salons, libraries, church parking lots. You're going to see a full-scale grassroots campaign, as well as what I'd call an air campaign, which is the advertising dollars. Again, thanks in large part to the private dollars that a local foundation donated, as well as the fundraiser, the advertising dollars from the We Are GR newspapers. You might recall, we've brought that publication virtually tax-free because of the advertisers, which has freed up those dollars for us to invest in getting the word of these parents. Robo calls, text messaging, email, the full assault of communications that will be out there.
Thank you. Questions from other board members? Student representative has a question.
So with the students that go to the Center of Innovations, will they have like free choice to what sports do they want to play for?
It's based on where they live on the map, so I know the coloration is not there, but it's no different than for those students that attend City High. They play at their, what we call base high school, so it'll be based on where they live on the map, and you can kind of see a dark blue line that draws through, or maybe that's just me because I've seen the map so many times. But that will determine which team the students play on.
Great question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That is it. Thank you.
We are into our action items. We have before us policy 9240, and that, before we, I asked for a motion, Dr. Randalls, I'm putting you on the spot, but I wonder if you could just give us a summation of what's being revised with this policy and what's before us.
You certainly are putting me on the spot.
I thought it would, I know I am, but I thought it was appropriate that you would...
I won't be on the spot. Let's see. The, the actual policy, you have, what was, what was your goal for me to discuss here?
You, you were in finance, just describe what the, what we're, what we're voting before us.
The thought was, and, and we have it highlighted for our, our packet in terms of, we previously had a policy, it didn't specify, as I recall, in our discussion in finance, was that it did not mention certain, not only to be specific about certain sort of nicotine-containing items, but then also to have enough broad language to cover newly-developed products by the tobacco industry. And so that was sort of the goal in bringing forth this policy. And then I think it's being spearheaded throughout the state to try and get a, a more robust policy on board. So... Smoke-free tobacco. Right, yes, that is not just the, the smoke, smoking isn't just a problem, which is second-hand issue as well, but then the, the tobacco products are still problematic for oral cancers, et cetera. So that was where this drive is coming from.
Thank you. Thank you, and my apologies for putting you on the spot. Do I have a motion to approve a first reading of the changes to policy 9240?
So moved?
Support?
Support.
Discussion?
Sounds like it makes less sense.
Any discussion, comment? All right. Mr. Ross, will you call the roll? Call them vote.
Who made the motion, please?
Monica.
Supported by Ms. Slade.
Slade.
Yes.
Ross, yes. Randalls.
Yes.
O'Connor.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
President of all.
Yes.
Motion passes at zero.
Thank you. Second in our action items is the insurance, insurance policy holder resolution. I've asked Ms. Davis to come up here and answer any questions before we call for a As you remember, we had tabled this earlier, so here is your opportunity to ask any final questions before we call for a motion.
Can you just explain what this, what this resolution does in terms of making us policy holder versus the history, the history of the way it was arranged?
Um, in order to receive, so let me first remind you of why we've brought this before you. It is one of the eight requirements that a district must meet in order to receive the best practices funding for this current fiscal year. And in, in the struggle in the past about being a policy holder was kind of eliminated with section 1255A of the school code, which requires insurance carriers to make claims available upon written request by a district within 10 days. And then I also want to point out again that what this doesn't do, being insurance policy holder, does not change our obligation to bargain the type or level of benefit coverage with our employee groups and their insurance.
Mr. O'Connor?
Just a, just a reminder to the, those in the audience that may be concerned that this has anything to do with Public Act 152, it has absolutely nothing to do with it.
It is not related, correct?
Yeah.
That being said, another couple things for the audience. This is one of, we have to meet seven of eight criteria, so we don't have to meet all the criteria in order to get this per pupil funding. That's the first... That's the first point. Second of all, the per pupil, the best practices funding largely evaporated. We thought it was going to be fifty-four dollars a pupil and now it turns out to be something like sixteen dollars a child. This is a very small incentive at this point, whether we make it or not.
For next year.
Um, that's status for the two thousand thirteen budget that was released, the executive budget that was proposed, so the current year we are still fifty-two dollars per pupil.
Well, that's good to know. The other, the other point that I think we made earlier was this is something we can revisit, because if this is something that has adverse consequences that we don't anticipate, we can change our policy.
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
I actually have a couple more questions. What is, what is this, I mean, what is your impression of why this is a best practice? What does this do that not hold, not being policyholder, we couldn't do?
Well, prior to section twelve fifty-five A of the school code that was enacted, what would it allowed us to do is to get disaggregated claims information from the insurance carriers so that if we wanted to put something out for bid just to see what was out there, we could do that so that other insurance companies could submit a quality bid because they would know what our claims information is. And again, that would be, that would have been a disaggregated or would be disaggregated information. But also just want to say that it doesn't mean that we can unilaterally change the benefit coverage, the carrier and the, and the level. We, that still is a required negotiated item.
Okay, and so, and most districts have gone to this from your impression of this. And then also, there have been people questioning whether or not, if we're now the policyholder, we would have right to information that we didn't have right to before, such as personal medical information? Is that?
I.
This, I just wanted to, I just want to make sure that's not true. I mean, my impression is that it's not, but.
No, that would not be the claims, level of claims information we've received from the insurance carrier would not be at that level where we could identify that an individual had these types of claims submitted.
So we have no more access to personal information?
Correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis? Do I have a motion?
Motion's already on the floor.
So, hang on, just so I can.
Oh, okay.
I had, I had one more question. You said prior to this act, this would have established, this would have accomplished this. Are you saying that an act is now passed which makes this largely meaningless except for us to gather this performance funding?
Correct. There is section twelve fifty-five A of the school code.
So this is a meaningless best practice, but nonetheless, we have to do it to grab our paycheck.
To get a million dollars.
It's like an old score.
I'll roll, Mr. Ross.
Slade?
Yes.
Ross, yes. Randalls?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
LeGrand?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
President Faul.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support? Call the vote.
Slade?
Yes.
Ross, yes. Randalls?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
LeGrand?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
President Faul.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Discussion items, we have none. So now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
And as I call you down before you speak, if you would like a one-minute reminder, please let me know, otherwise I will not provide it. Pamela Bloink, Kathleen Lazo, Tina Ratliff, and Paul Helder, if you four can make your way down. Pamela Bloink, Kathleen Lazo, Tina Ratliff, and Paul Helder.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Bloink. I have been working for Grand Rapids Public Schools since nineteen eighty-nine. I'm very happy to say, I don't know if she's still around, but Tara Sieda Long hired me back then, and I have been very proud to work for GRPS for all these years and through all the changes and things that we've gone through. But I have to say, I'm pretty sad right now because of the inequity of the insurance. It's just myself and my daughter, we're considered two people. Literally, my take-home pay doesn't take me home anymore. I did not earn enough to make my house payment and my car payment. I don't know what to do. When I added up all my bills, I'm short. I'm fifty-four years old. Do I need to go work at McDonald's or Burger King? I mean, I have my masters plus thirty. I mean, I remember coming here to the board and being congratulated as a highly qualified teacher, and I cannot live. On paper, it looks like I make a great amount, but what's taken out is close to half of what I'm supposed to make, and that largest chunk is I'm being penalized. If I was with my abusive husband still, I'd be paying less. When I got rid of him back in two thousand and eight, I could still earn a living. It was tight. Then each year, we vote not to take a raise to keep our insurance, and now we have our insurance, twenty dollars every time I go to the doctor, eighty dollars for the medicine that my daughter is on, eighty dollars for two of the medicines that I am on. I don't know what to do. I'm asking you for some kind of help. I don't understand the formula and why it's not even across the board. I don't understand that. Why am I being penalized? Because there's, I mean, it's two people, I think I should be paying less than a family of five, but I could understand if everybody paid the same amount, single, family, whatever. I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm trying not to cry, but I don't know what to do. I don't have the money to pay the bills, literally. If you'd like to see my pay stuff, it's up in my purse. I left it up there. I used to take with, before this, eighty-four dollars a month. Now it's two hundred and ninety-seven. That's a huge jump. My financial guy figured out when we first got that letter, oh, it'll probably be about double. Well, he didn't figure in this, that, and the inequities. I mean, we just figured it would be straight across the board, the twenty percent cap required by the state. I mean, I haven't put anything into my retirement in six years. I can't afford to retire, but it seems like I'm being pushed out because I'm at the high end of the pay scale. Like I said, it looks on paper like I'm making a decent amount, I should be able to, to live, but I can't. Thank you for a minute's time, thank you.
I'm Kathleen Lazo, my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
I want the one minute. Okay. I, unlike even more so than most of the other teachers, I'm a halftime teacher at Southeast Career Pathways. My second year there, fifty percent of the teachers were unhired. I was not allowed to work the second half of the day because to work the second half of the day, I would have been working a hundred and ten percent. Explain that math to me. No other school says that you work a hundred and ten percent because you work all day. Okay. So I'm not allowed to go full-time. I don't have healthcare at all because it's nine hundred dollars a month for me and my daughter, a halftime teacher. You know that's not possible. I prefer to pay my house and my car, but that isn't really why I'm here because I want us to get beyond this, beyond the fact that teachers can't make it. Teachers can't make it doesn't mean you won't have teachers. You will always have teachers. You will always have some people who are willing to do whatever it takes to get something to get by and still do their very best for your children. But you will have continually roaming teachers because as teachers can't afford to live, they will go elsewhere they have to, not necessarily other districts. In my case, it's other schools. My school's designated as halftime only, so as soon as teachers can get full-time work, they go. What happens to my school? It's constantly chaos. We have the seventeen-year-olds that didn't work in any traditional setting, and the district likes to keep us in chaos. That is not the type of climate we can create a new culture for, for our students. How do you teach kids behavior inconsistency when your climate is constantly changing on you? You take the rug out of under, under our feet to do our best for our kids, and that's where our mind should be. Now, there's a couple other things I want to do for other things. The one thing is, I'm a math teacher. It's imperative that when we move forward, that we consider some creative way to be able to teach middle school math in high school. Our kids don't know it. It's the main thing for the ACT, in the main criteria for either success in college or in the workplace. We can't be handcuffed not to teach it in high school. I suggest it become part of an elective course that our kids can earn if their, if their test scores are under a certain amount that they take an elective course in math and English. Ms. Lazo, your time's up. Thank you.
Before Ms. Ratliff gets started, Wendy Wilson and Katie Gilchick could come down, please. Would you like to remind them? Are you good?
Good evening, Superintendent Neal and members of the board. My name is Tina Ratliff, and I have been a teacher with GRPS for five years. I'm here tonight to voice my concerns about teacher pay and the health insurance mess. The reason I teach for GRPS are because of my amazing students. These students are wonderful in so many ways, and myself and the teachers I work with have the skills necessary for students to achieve at a high level. I would like to continue to teach these students, but I don't know how I financially can afford to. Please see page one. This is an example of my paycheck. Yes, that's correct. I am a fifth-year teacher bringing home five hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents for two weeks. I have a bachelor's degree from Western Michigan University and currently qualify for the bridge card. Please see pages two, three, and four. How is this possible? I feel frustrated. I feel frustrated, undervalued, and embarrassed. How do you expect me to promote a district that treats its teachers in such a way? I don't want any excuses or sympathy. What I want to know is, how are you all going to make this right? Thank you.
Before?
I'm not with him.
All right. Before, Mr.? Before even, before even, Mr. Helder and Ms. Winston goes, I would respectfully ask that you refrain from shouting out or hooting or hollering. Thank you. Ms. Mr. Helder, Ms. Ms. Winston, you go ahead.
If you could remind me if I go too long?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not going to talk about finances or paychecks or contracts or bidding. I am a teacher at Sherwood Park K eight, and we have just discovered that the proposal is to put four to five EI classrooms in our building, and we're concerned about that because we have open pods in the elementary, and some of you have been in our, in our school and are aware of that. The only way that we know about this is because of rumors. Just today, our staff meeting, our principal was able to talk about it, and there are lots of questions. We hear that there's, there have been engineers, engineers coming into the building on Saturdays so that they don't actually see the building in use. They don't see what the pods look like when there are students in the building. And they're proposing to build walls in the pod, but only like eighteen inches from the ceiling, because if they go all the way to the ceiling, that would violate the fire code. So there will still be noise in the pod going through that open space. And we're told that the EI classrooms are going to go into one pod, and the classrooms that are there will be moved into the other pods, making very crowded regular ed classrooms. We could have a hundred to a hundred twenty fourth and fifth graders in one pod with just movable dividers between the classrooms. It gets loud, it's chaotic, it's very difficult to have class discussions or give tests, all of those kinds of things. So I'd like to invite the board members into our building to imagine what this might be like, because we don't know what's going on, nobody talked to us about it, we feel there was a lack of transparency. We weren't asked for input. I think we would have some good ideas if people actually asked us, how could we make this work? We're also concerned because we heard, and again, this is a rumor, that there would be a middle school EI classroom in the middle school area where our science lab is currently located. So that means we will no longer have a science lab, and we're concerned about where all of the science materials will be stored after that. So if someone could just come to our building and talk to us, let us know what's happening, and possibly school board members visit to see what it's really like, we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Before I begin, to the young lady who was up here just a few moments ago, Tina? Okay. And to everybody else who's in the same situation, I, I want everybody to know, our members to know, we've heard about the problems and we're well aware of what's going on and the suffering that is taking place. So if you'd mark on your calendar next week, Thursday at five P M., we're going to be doing a social service explanation and exploration seminar to assist those members who need to, to get onto whatever social service programs they qualify for.
Good.
Good evening, again. I can only imagine right now, I'm not even going to do this, how beleaguered some of you are probably feeling. I want everyone to understand, it's not, I don't believe, anyone's intention to beat up on anybody on the board right now, but our people are hurting. They've been hurting for a while. They're hurting more than they have at any time, partially because of some of the laws that have been passed, which I know we can't control, and partially because of some of the decisions that are being made here. Couple of years ago, some of you asked me to basically step out of the spotlight. I was spending a lot of time engaging directly with Dr. Taylor, talking about corruption in the district, talking about the fact that we don't spend money on instruction, talking about the mistreatment and the intimidation and the bullying and all of the other things that were going on. And the feeling was, with a couple of you, that by continuing to hammer on that stuff publicly, that I may well be doing the district more harm than good, simply because of the long-term damage that it was going to cause, damage that would go well beyond Dr. Taylor. During those conversations, we talked a lot about what our, our vision for the district is and how we were going to make things better, how we were going to take care of people and become a family again, and, and try to do right by our students and invest more in their educations. And I gotta say, you know, we were told this was going to happen when we had a new superintendent, and I just had to hang on and just wait, and I did that. And we have a new superintendent. And I gotta say, at first, when Ms. Neal was named interim superintendent, I, I was pretty excited, and we were making a lot of, of good, fast progress. There were some folks who were recognized as detrimental and harmful to the district, and some of those folks, not all, but some, were let go, and that helped morale a lot.
Mr. Helder, can you conclude?
I, I will do so. I, I'll just conclude by saying, since, since, I would say the beginning of this year, since the interim phase ended, I'm having a hard time feeling the love here, and, and I don't know if I should have just used the momentum we had before to, to push on until everything was removed, but we took a leap of faith. So given our history and, and how often the association's been right about what's been going on, I guess I would ask for you to take a leap of faith with us and do what needs to be done to resolve this, this contract issue and to resolve the problems facing our district. It's not a sales problem. Thank you.
This is Katie Gilchick, Carol Russell, Jennifer Lev Ms. Katie Gilchick, Carol Russell, Jennifer Lovell, and Jane Neiman, please. Anyone like a reminder? You're okay.
I should be pretty sure. Hi, I'm Katie Gilchick. Thank you so much for letting me talk with you. I am a second-year teacher, first-year teacher in the district. I just wanted to talk about, obviously, what everyone is talking about with budget and I just wanted to bring a young teacher's perspective. Because sometimes I feel like a lot of the older teachers, you know, they've been here longer, they see the changes and I haven't had that experience to see what it used to be like. When you're going forward to making your decision about what you're going to do for next year, just keep in mind about the young teachers. We did everything that we were told to do by you guys as high schoolers. Sorry.
It's alright. It's alright.
I spent $60,000 to get a degree, which is a lot more than it used to be because costs go up. And I did everything I was supposed to do and I get out into the workforce and I am just so happy that I have a job and I'm so fortunate to be in GRPS. And because I grew up in this area and I know how important teachers are to kids. And I just want you to keep that in mind, that not only am I young and hardworking, I work two jobs just to make rent, but I don't have a house payment yet. And I don't have kids. And so while I take home more than some other teachers, but I'm getting married in the summer and as it is right now, I work seven days a week. And I don't know how much longer I can do that. So I just want you to keep in mind when you're making these decisions that not only do we need to take care of our more experienced older teachers, but also think about the young teachers who have worked really hard and they are in a serious amount, thank you, a serious amount of debt just to do what they love. And I heard a principal say to me once that we are in really hard times and this is the toughest it's ever been for young teachers, but if you just push through on the other side of this storm that we're in, we'll be the teachers that are supposed to be there. But that's not fair to put on the young teachers because I have to buy food and I can't. And I can't give the time, I'm a music teacher and we do a lot of after-hours with concerts and I can't give the time to that because I have to go to my second job. So now I'm not as well ready for them as I should be, but I have to, you have to do what you have to do. So I just want you to keep in mind that that young teachers matter too, even though we don't have the credentials yet and we don't have the experience yet. It sends a bad message to the young teachers when they're sitting in the lunchroom and I can't sit in the lunchroom anymore because it's so negative that I can't do that because it'll drive me crazy. So I have to eat alone because I can't do that. And I had a job in Arizona and I came here from Arizona because I believe in GRPS and I wanted to be a part of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Russell, Carol Russell, Jennifer Lovell, and Jane Neiman.
I'm Jennifer Lovell and this is my 12th year with GRPS, 10th year at Union High School. And she made me think that I moved here from Arizona when I got divorced because teacher pay benefits were better and in Arizona, I would have qualified for welfare. She just made me think this. I'm like, really? I'm not in any different situation than anybody else. I'm renting out all the rooms in my house so I don't have to sell it. And she made me emotional too. But question that I have is one that I discussed with one of the board members last week. Where is this 9% going? I understood that this 9% taken out for our insurance was going to come back to the school district. And I'm not sure anybody knows where this 9% is going. I mean, what would be beautiful is if that was, if that came back to the district, if that was just turned around and given back to us. You know, we're not asking for much. We are working our hearts out. I work over 60 hours a week. Either I take away from my students and get another job with the hopes that maybe the other job will turn into a full-time job, or I sell my house and I move in with my brother. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'm Jane Neiman, Detroit Union High School. Been with the district for almost seven years. I don't have a prepared paper today. I came before this board two weeks ago and talked about the dedication of the teachers in this district. I don't think I need to repeat that. I just wanted to say that when you pay us, a lot of that money goes back into the district. I hire kids to work in my room. I gave a mom money, gas money, because she comes to help me with my fundraisers on weekends. Oh, boy. I had a job interview on Thursday night and while they was talking about what I do with my kids here, they asked me a question I hated to answer and it was, "You seem so passionate, you seem to love your job, why do you want to leave?" And I had to say, "I don't really." But the night before, I had just come from the doctor's office to find out that I have three or four conditions all brought on by stress. And my husband whines almost every night that I'm never home. And I leave and come home and don't see my 12-year-old sometimes, all day, because I'm with my kids at GRPS. And I'm not the only one who does those kind of things. So please, please consider, and what's going on and who's hurting and how much they've sacrificed for these kids. We've sacrificed love, we love these kids. And my husband, when I talk about getting a job somewhere else, he laughs at me. He says, "You know, you're not going to leave." He said, "You know you love your students." He's right. Thank you.
As Ms. Russell gets ready, can we get Jack Prince, Ms. Dan Dewong, and Erin McDonald, please.
Greetings to our president and board members. I would like to thank you for taking the time out to listen to our concerns. My name is Carol Russell and I'm for all qualified teachers, but my biggest concern as a parent and as a volunteer parent pal, for over 25 years, I've been volunteering in this district. And I would like the board to understand that I have a big concern because we don't have enough African-American teachers in our district. I mean, it's sad to say that they always have to go outside our district to get a job. And I'm just not understanding why the board hasn't fulfilled the racial balance as far as hiring African-American teachers. There are lots of qualified African-American teachers that's in this district. They grew up, they have the passion and the love to teach in our district, but they don't have that opportunity because our board is not looking into why we are not fulfilling that need concerning our children too. And we, the people, parents, would like to understand and actually want to know why is it not seen that the board is being fair? And we actually would like to know why we put you guys here to treat everybody equal, to make everybody equally in this, in this district. So like I said, I would like for you, the board, to go back and revamp and think about and look over why is not the balance there? And that is a big concern for me. It's like I said, I've been volunteered for 25 years with two kids in this district. They grew up and went to school, they graduated, they came and got their bachelors and master degrees outside of Grand Rapids area though, but I still like this district, I love this district, I love volunteering, but I just have that big passion and concern about African-American teachers are not given a fair share. Thank you for your time.
Members of the board, Superintendent Neal, President, my name's Erin McDonald and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here tonight. I'm currently student teaching at Union High School, finishing my last semester at Grand Valley State University. I'm so thankful to be working with inner-city youth, even though I would be the first to admit it's never easy. But having the privilege of seeing their growth on a daily basis makes all the difficult days worthwhile. I strongly believe that apart from family life, schools have the most influential impact on a child's future. Hopefully, I am lucky enough to get a job in this district or one just like it, as I hope to make a difference in a place just like this. I realize that the biggest challenge in working in a district like this isn't necessarily the challenging student population. My eyes have been opened to the multitude of factors that make working in an inner-city school more challenging than other more affluent districts. Yes, the students come from challenging homes and their parents often offer no support to the school district, but the lack of financial support from the state and the decreasing amount each year puts a burden on the board and administration to make cuts where there isn't room to make any more cuts. For years and years, you have been asked to cut back and the decisions are getting more and more difficult. I understand it isn't easy. In the last few years, pay steps have been taken away in order to stay afloat. This doesn't make for a positive work environment. I know that the desire of every school district is to have a staff body full of highly qualified and effective teachers. Throughout the state and country, schools are under pressure to have the best teachers working for them, especially with the increasing stress of successful test scores. In order for Grand Rapids Public to be in the race for these effective and highly qualified teachers, please take into consideration the value of these teachers. The thought of cutting their already low salary is only going to drive away great teachers that this district desperately needs. Please consider the overall effect of these cuts, not only from an educator's standpoint, but from a student's as well. My hope is that you still recognize and value the hard-working, dedicated staff you do have here at GRPS and make every effort possible to reach out to them and give them the support they deserve as the leaders of our youth. While you might not be able to support them with more financial resources, I believe there are other ways in the meantime to give them the boost they need to continue on this difficult journey. The only way to improve is to rise above the challenges presented to us. I know there are amazing people graduating every year who are anxious and excited to enter into the world of education. Recruiting the best and brightest into this district to work with the shining stars already employed will mean a bright future for the students at GRPS who so deserve the best. I want you to know honestly that I'm not here to fight tonight against you, but to simply ask for your support. I ask you to think about the long-term effects that your decisions could have on the district. Consider the teachers that you are driving out and scaring away. And more than anything, be willing to fight for the students that come to this district to receive the best education possible. Thank you.
I'm Diane Dewong. I have been working in the Grand Rapids School District for 12 years. I'm here to address two points that have truly affected teachers and more so me. The last four years have been extremely difficult for me and my daughter, cutting back on spending due to the changes that have emerged in the economy and to no stop increase in salary. I have been challenged financially in every aspect and now I'm enduring another one with the increase in health insurance. I'm asking the board to please reconsider how this increase is not equitable to me or other teachers who find themselves in this situation. I would like clarification as to how a single parent with one child falls into the two-person category for deduction and not under the family. Okay, when I called the benefits office, I was told under the ruling of Michigan State Treasury that two-person is as follow, husband and wife, mother or father and child. So my question is, how can it be? According to the Public Act 52 of 2011, under section 15.563, it clearly states the three types of deduction. One, employees with single coverage deduction. Two, employees with individual and spouse coverage deduction. Not employees with individual and a child. So, and three is family, okay? So clearly, the language of the Public Act of 152 has been lost in translation, putting single parents at a disadvantage financially. As a working profession, professional, I am saddened to have heard of colleagues getting assistance through DHS and even to getting the food, you know, getting the food trucks in order to feed their families. We are working for a supposedly great district that cares dearly for both students and teachers, yet this is the plight some teachers endure in order to make ends meet. I believe the district wants teachers and staff to give their best when it comes to educating and molding young minds. This is what we do despite the many changes going on in the district. We now need your support and mindfulness in regards to the many financial cuts from insurance increases to stop increases. How can we continue to give our best effort when we have to continually worry about making ends meet, putting a roof over our head, and feeding our families? I'm asking that you, Superintendent Neal and board members, to please reevaluate the cost of the health insurance increases that single parents have to pay. $600 a month is simply putting me on the edge of things. Please reconsider this deduction and the possibility of a stop increase. I want to continue to come to work knowing that I am working for a school district that cares and supports both students and teachers. I thank you for your time.
Before Mr. Prince gets started, we can get Josez Anderson, Sharon Reins, and Terry Gall, and Daniel Morse down front, please, and Sue Dreckenhahn.
Good evening. My name is Jack Prince. I am a school teacher at Union High School and I am approaching my 30th year as a public secondary school teacher. You know, as I was sitting in the back of the room, I marveled at how beautiful a room full of teachers really is. You know, I've seen rooms full of athletes, I've seen rooms of celebrities, I've seen rooms of all kinds of genres of human beings. But there's something uniquely beautiful about a room full of teachers. And I might say, what price tag would we put on the passion and the genuine concern that we've seen expressed at this table tonight? How big a figure would that possibly be? Because I don't think these people work this passion up in some kind of a dramatic flair. I think that's the way their hearts really are. Since this is a room full of teachers, I'd like to quote a teacher, one that has a lot of fame and history according to his name. Socrates said, "There is nothing more foolish than the obvious to those who are unwilling to admit the truth." This is an educational boardroom. There are teachers that are brothers and sisters to Socrates in this room. Let's analyze this quote. "There is nothing more foolish than the obvious." What is obvious about this evening? To me, the thing that is obvious is, from this current state of negotiation, that this district has not given fair pay for nearly a decade and is refusing to change that ugly practice. That's obvious. Secondly, this district is in a hurry to spell the teachers' union, that which has fought and worked as a stalwart force to maintain wages for workers and their families. Everything else is subterfuge, everything else is a distraction. Socrates also maintained that questioning was the backbone of all learning. He stated that the questions that are refused the most are the ones that needed to be answered. They're the ones that needed our attention. These questions that are obvious, somehow they've missed being answered, such as, "Why has this district systemically refused to pay its teachers fairly? Why does this district ignore the advice from a professional consulting firm? Why do we hear from board members that things are tight when it is known that there is upwards to $20 million sitting in the back pocket of this district? What is the retention rate at Grand Rapids Public Schools over the past five years? How many teachers have left this district to continue their career at other school districts? It has been recommended by Cambridge Education that pay be increased for teachers' retention. Evidently to Cambridge, it is of educational benefit to the students to retain teachers. Do you, the board members, agree with those findings? If you do, why don't you push those who are directing the negotiations, which are currently going to..." going on? If you don't agree with those advisory group's recommendations, why don't you fire them and save hundreds of thousands of dollars for this district? It is an empirical reality that high turnovers of personnel are counterproductive to student achievement and academic continuity. Why does this district insist on fostering an environment of uncertainty and flux? We are asked to sell the district's image. It will miss cover, we must cover this sad condition and pretend teachers' continuation is of no consequence. The musical chair phenomenon called internal transfer has also been condemned by academic leaders within our own state universities. This revolving teacher replacement, coupled with a lack of fair and competitive wages, adds up to our environment, which is the antithesis of the security and consideration that our students desperately need. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Reins. I'm a teacher at, uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools. Um, I was here at the last board meeting and I read to you a letter that was composed by the teachers at, uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools that we felt was representative of all the teachers because it, uh, pointed out the pay disparity that we have suffered for a very long time and, uh, some of the other obstacles that we have faced. Um, my intention was, um, that I was going to read this letter again to you tonight as well as, uh, submit to you, uh, more signatures that have come in. But I've felt that, um, my colleagues have spoken much clearer and, um, much better than this letter can say because their words, um, have come from their hearts and their souls. And I would just like to say to this board that I am very proud to be a part of these teachers at Grand Rapids Public Schools. My colleagues, I feel, are, uh, some of the best people in this city and, um, I'm very proud to be a part of that. So, in closing, I would simply just like to read the last, uh, paragraph of this letter and I hope that you take it to heart. Um, "It is at this point that we now find it necessary to appeal to you, Board, Board President and Superintendent, to call upon your knowledge and your sense of duty to do what is right for the advancement of this district. We trust that a contract, a fair contract, will be forthcoming that is commensurate with our stated request. This shared objective, of which we are proud to be a part, should be working stronger, better, together. Sincerely, the teachers of Grand Rapids Public Schools." Thank you.
My name is Sue Drekenheim. I'm another teacher from Sherwood and I just want to kind of reinforce what, um, Wendy said. We really hope that we will get board members and Superintendent Neal to come to our building and see what it's like. This year, I teach an orange pod, which is kindergarten, first grade. We are the most crowded pod. We have four classrooms in the pod compared to the others that only have three. This year, we have a number of very, very immature kindergartners who are having a lot of problems. We are the only pod that has a concrete wall that actually totally separates the two sides of the pod from kindergarten to first, but at each end, it's open. When the child in the class that's kitty-corner from mine has a bad day, which is almost daily, I can hear that child screaming and crying in my room. My students hear it. When the kindergartners in the room next to mine have problems and have to be taken out day after day after day because of their problems, it totally disrupts my class. I can't imagine what it's going to be like in the other pods if they're putting up more walls or putting four classrooms with bigger bodies in those limited spaces. It's very crowded in our pods already. As was mentioned before, we have concerns regarding bathroom, regarding space, and how and where they can even put in walls that would still be legally safe without making the classrooms even way smaller than they are now. So, again, I hope you'll be able to come out and see what it's like. Um, we want the best for our kids and it's very, very difficult when you have this open classroom setting and the noise travels. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry Gall, uh, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of this esteemed board and Superintendent Neal. Um, as you recall, last two weeks ago, I was speaking about a conversation that I had with my father about how Hitler ever got into power and I equated that to the fact that, you know, there was big lies put out there by the, the powers that may. Um, I'm not going to spend my whole three minutes on that, but I just wanted to finish up by saying, um, if you want to see the damage that a privatized, um, school system, vouchers, et cetera, which are being pushed by the powers that may here in Grand Rapids, um, just take a look at Milwaukee, okay? And, um, even closer, um, Muskegon Heights, okay? Because those kids, those poor, impoverished kids have got no chance. Muskegon, Muskegon Heights, which has already been privatized, uh, those already, this privatized this year in the summer, um, since the fall, they've already had a turnover of over 30% of their staff. And in the, in the high school alone, they've gone through four principals. And, uh, and, you know, if, if my father were here, uh, today, I would ask him the question, you know, "Pop, how did the divorced family ever get to be partners with Grand Rapids Public Schools?" Um, and I'd also like, I'd like to read a letter. This letter, um, I was excited when I got this letter in my email. Um, it renewed my hope and it lifted my spirits. It was sent by, um, Superintendent Teresa Neal. Um, it was sent out in August of 12. It says, "Dear teachers, uh, first and foremost, welcome back and thank you again for all you do for our students, schools, and the district. It is truly my honor and privilege to serve you and words will never truly capture my appreciation and respect for your work and profession. Within the first weeks of my appointment as interim superintendent, I aggressively engaged in a listening tour and outlined my short-term goals, one of which included securing a contract by the end of June for our teachers and GREA members. While I am pleased that a lot of great work has already been done to transform and rebuild the faith, trust, and professional respect in this district, both internally, staff to staff, and externally, staff to schools, to students, to parents, to partners, the mid-year transition delayed the start of our negotiations. While the teams are working hard and have met many times, we have not yet reached an agreement, we have not reached, reached an agreement. Additional dates are being scheduled. I can only ask for your continued patience and understanding. We have established the foundation for future growth and success. We are charging, we are changing the culture of this district, starting at the top. It is going to take time and perseverance, but my hope and optimism about the future of this district could not be greater. Please know that the contract negotiations are night and day in comparison to previous years and I know that both sides are working together in a respectful and professional manner to reach an agreement. Thank you again for all you do."
Uh, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I have many connections. My name's Dan Morse, sorry. I have many connections to GRPS. Two of my grandparents graduated from Union High School in the late 30s. Uh, my dad was among the first students at Shawnee Park Elementary School when it opened in the 60s. My mother was in the first graduating class at the new Union High School in 1969. My oldest brother and his wife are 1998 GRPS grads, while my other brother and his wife are both 2001 grads. I myself graduated from GRPS in 2006, the same year my mom retired after 31 years of teaching here in the district. I'll never forget the moment in 7th grade, uh, in health class, we had to go, we had an assignment, we had to go present unhealthy lifestyles to an elementary school. I went to COVEL and, uh, when I got home that day, I told my mom, "Mom, when I grow up, I want to teach in Grand Rapids when I grow up." Well, I'm glad to say that 12 years later, I got a phone call from the HR department offering me a job teaching government, uh, here in the district at Creston High School. Uh, this year, I am teaching social studies at Ford Middle and I love working with my students and staff members on a daily basis. Uh, many on this board have said that we want to attract and retain, uh, the best and brightest teachers. However, I am afraid that next year, I might not be able to continue serving the district that gave me some wonderful opportunities. Because of the ongoing issues relating to the GREA contract, uncertainty about positions for next year, and the ever-increasing cost of living, I may have to look outside GRPS for employment next year. We must settle on a contract that is both dedicated to our students and fair to our staff. It is true that we are all GR. I appeal to you that in assisting with solving, I appeal to you to assist in solving with the contract issue. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Anderson, did you leave? Last card? Yes, that's it.
Yes. Superintendent's comments?
No comment.
You forgot Lori Carriage. Oh, my apologies.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Come on. Yep, absolutely. I'm actually reading for a teacher in my building and she wrote this up for me. "Good afternoon. I am having Lori Carriage read my story as I am afraid of backlash by my administrator. I became a teacher because I have a passion to teach. I graduated with high honors and currently am continuing my education with the pursuit, with the pursuit of a master's degree. I understand making sacrifices because I have made many to support my family. I currently am still making first-year wages as a third-year teacher. Last year, I had to apply for food stamps because the cost of insurance and the lack of an increase in income, I could no longer make ends meet. Unfortunately, I qualified and my children now receive free lunch at their school. It is hard for them to understand how I made all the sacrifices I have made to go back to school, to get my bachelor's degree and still not have our family be in a better position than it was before I started teaching. Again, I understand making short-term sacrifices for a long-term goal, however, I do not see an end in sight and this causes financial stress, not only to me, but my children as well. I have worked in the food industry and the medical industry prior to coming into education. In those fields, I received an increase in income because I had gained experience, was more knowledgeable, and the company did not want to lose a valuable employee. Other industries know that to keep employees morale high and turnover low, that they need job satisfaction in many ways, including monetarily. As teachers, we motivate our students, yet you do not motivate teachers. I love teaching the students in Grand Rapids Public Schools. I love what I do, but I also need to support my family. I need some motivation. Thank you."
Board member comments. Mr. LeGrand?
Thank you.
Jane Neiman? Dr. Handel? Miss Lee? Mr. Ross?
No, ma'am.
Dr. Baker? No comment for me. This meeting is adjourned.